Tim adores his wife, but since junk slave gave him a cricket's neck, he can't turn to see her. Who's that? Now he's convinced she's left him.
Michelle?
With our love your mattress guarantee, finding the right bed is painless. Unjump your sleeve at mattress firm.
Oh, bring the tilt the screen down, I'm sorry. Got it. All right. Good evening, everyone. Thank you for joining tonight. So. I'm glad to see we have a pretty good crowd tonight. Bear with me, we're gonna try to stream this meeting at the same time that we have everybody here in the room. Hopefully, everybody at home can hear us as well and see us at the same time. So thank you, everyone, for joining. Let me just see if we can get these video settings a little bit different here. There we go, okay. So I think we're kind of working now. Again, thanks, everyone, for joining us. The purpose of tonight's meeting, and we're gonna try to stay largely focused on this one topic, is to discuss whether or not we should make any changes to the areas surrounding Patterson Ave. And Maple Street and the direction of traffic in that particular area. So what we're gonna do is I'm gonna run through a bunch of the potential scenarios that have been discussed for that area. Run through the history of that area, and then we'll open it up for some discussion at the end. I have some drawings and some renderings of what could possibly happen there. Talk about some of the benefits, talk about some of the detriments of what might surround each one of those scenarios. And then we'll open it up for discussion and finally decide, here's a group, whether or not we should make changes or shouldn't make changes ultimately to our downtown area here in Little Falls. So again, thank you all for joining this evening. I see we have most of our council members here in attendance. So you have some former council members here in attendance. And there's a lot that goes into this, including a lot of decisions from some of the former council members, including those dating back 10 years ago now, and some of their names are are gonna come up this evening. And I say that because there's a lot of things that come with the changes that may result in the discussions from this evening. The first is a lot of the concerns that are brought up to me, the council members now and in the past, surrounding Little Falls, downtown, Main Street, Maple, Patterson Ave, have to do with traffic, circulation down there, and parking. And those are the three things that we're really going to talk about as we review all of the benefits and all of the detriments as to whether or not there are changes, there are not changes, there's some changes, or there's drastic changes to the downtown area this evening. And again, at the end, after we run through the possibilities, we're gonna open it to questions and answers. I can tell you, I have, I'm certainly no traffic expert, but I have spent a couple of hours rilling traffic experts the past couple of weeks to kind of get a good grip on what the benefits and detriments could or would be. And to really, I have an understanding of why maybe changes should be made or shouldn't be made. And hopefully, I'll be able to answer some of those questions that you may have. If I can't, yeah, hopefully, you know, I'll be able to circle back to you with a better answer. But I feel that, again, based upon the number of questions that I have been asking lately, I hope that I'll be able to answer a majority of your questions here this evening. So first, I want to address, there's been a lot of Facebook chatter about changes in the downtown. And I want to make it clear that the purpose of hosting this meeting this evening was to see what everybody wants to do with this downtown area. I'm hosting this to get feedback from the community. It wasn't because there is a plan to make any changes to the downtown. In fact, the county, before approving any sort of changes to the downtown, has specifically said that they need to have direction from the municipality as to whether or not there will be a one-way, whether or not there will be, whether pedestrian plazas will be created, whether roads will be narrowed, whether changes will be made before they provide any sorts of approvals to any projects so that they know how wide roads will be, how wide sidewalks will be, and whether or not traffic lights may or may not need to be added in any of these intersections. So again, that's what this evening is about. Here's what I want to talk about. This is what I want, and this is what I vision for our Little Falls. I want to have a downtown that is safe, where we have people walking, where we have a nightlife, where we have weekends where people want to go to Little Falls. They don't want to go to Montclair, to Ridgewood, to other surrounding towns, where they want to come to Little Falls. Where they want to go to our restaurants, where they want to eat some ice cream, where they want to come to Little Falls. And again, I want them to be able to park when they do come here. And I don't want people to have to deal with traffic delays and backups during our peak hours. I also don't want to see people using side roads as cut-throughs on a regular basis. So these are all things that need to be considered as we go through all these options today. What I also want to say is that there has been no lack of transparency in what these potential changes may be. And in going through that, what I want to address with everybody this evening is the master plan that Little Falls created, and this is where I'm gonna go through just a little bit of the history of this town. The master plan that was adopted in December of 2013, 10 years ago, before I was even a councilman here in town, for anybody in the council was on the council here in town. And there was recommendations that were made by the mayor, the council, and the planning board at that time, again, over a decade ago. And in addition to a lot of other things that were recommended, what was recommended at that time was, in conjunction with the recommendations made for the Main Street downtown area, the feasibility of making Patterson Avenue a one-way street and developing a roundabout at the intersection of Maple and Patterson Ave should be explored in order to reduce conflicts in turning onto Main Street. This would also allow Patterson Avenue from Main Street to Maple Street to be narrowed, allowing for wider sidewalks and easier pedestrian walkability. Patterson could possibly be shut down from time to time, creating an area available for Main Street events such as farmers markets, fairs, outdoor shopping, etc. So for anyone that thinks this is a brand-new idea that's trying to be slid under the radar is mistaken, because this has been something that has had numerous public meetings dating back over a decade at this point, where Patterson Ave becoming a one-way has been a possibility. So again, please do not think that this is something that anyone is trying to, you know, slide under the radar and do in the darkened night. Now, with that said, to go through some of these possibilities here in Little Falls, what we need to go through is really the the options. And what I'm gonna do is I'm gonna bring up some slides here to show you three or four situations and possibilities that we have. But before I do that, what I want to go through is what we currently have on Patterson Ave. There's currently six parking spots on Patterson Ave. There's four on the western side, I'm sorry, on the eastern, yeah, no, I'm sorry, on the western side, which is where the primary is. And there's two on the eastern side, where the old TD Bank in the corner, where the physical therapy businesses. There are six spaces to park on Patterson Ave currently. It's not very much, and they are certainly used. As most of you know, there's been a new development that's approved on Patterson Ave. And there's gonna be, on the western side, six townhomes that all have fully compliant residential parking. There's three or four retail in another building with eight condos above it that has fully compliant residential parking. There's going to be a restaurant where Clifton, Clifton, most of you knows the Clifton Power Building, that will utilize public parking. And then on the eastern side of the street, the inner island of Patterson Ave, the triangle, there are 60 apartments that has fully compliant residential parking, as well as 7,000 square feet of retail and restaurant space in that area. That has some red, some parking that's compliant, and will also rely upon some public park. The developer is going to re-stripe and build areas in the Mars Canal lot that will add to the public parking in the downtown, including nine more public parking spaces. And there's also going to be, again, additional spots that will be added along the streets, which we're gonna go through in just a couple minutes, depending on whether the roadway is realigned as a one-way, two-way, and all of the other options that will go through. Now, one of the other things I want to nip early on here is some of the concerns that have been raised by the fire department, because that is certainly a concern that I had brought up early on, as well as the council members early on. Yep. And I have a short letter here from the fire department that they were asking me to address. And the member of Enterprise requested that I address these. And some of their concerns were, first of all, that response times, they have, they were deferring to the fire department chief. But they wanted to be sure that the existing fire zones and striping on Patterson Ave remain in either scenario, whether it be a one-way or a two-way. They wanted to ensure that there were four designated firefighter-only parking spots on Patterson Ave, which had been addressed and promised to them during part of the planning board application and by the, and by the council. They also wanted to ensure that in the event the roadway wasn't two-way, designed and incorporated turning radiuses for their apparatuses if they were making left-hand turns out of their firehouse, and that the existing width of the roadway remained the same in front of the firehouse to allow them to move over to back up into their base. That was their concerns, and those are all things that would certainly be addressed and accommodated. So their concerns for the firehouse will all certainly be addressed. As far as response times, that was a major concern if the roadway was going to be modified to a one-way. And we had run a number of tests with the department chief there. And the average difference in time and responses, and this was only if the fire truck had to head north, meaning down Patterson Ave, was a 30-second response time. And the things that need to be considered in that was, one, for the first time ever in the history of this department, there would be dedicated parking spaces in the front, with the four spaces, as well as six additional parking spaces in the rear, which we're gonna allocate in the Mars Canal lot for Company Two, where they will actually be able to park, getting dedicated spaces, which now they oftentimes spend some time either traveling around, looking for a spot, or locking in people in major emergencies, so they will have a lot less time looking for spots in the future. Right now, one thing that we don't require in town, and again, this is not a requirement, firefighters don't necessarily respond to the closest firehouse in town. We oftentimes have firefighters coming from Sing Act to Company Two, or from Great Nox to Company Two, and vice versa. So they are responding from all over the place. So they do take, you know, some time to get to each of their respective firehouses. And in order to increase the response time for the fire truck, if the roadway is realigned to a one-way, there would be a beacon added, a stoplight added, to ensure that there were no cars queued up at the Patterson Ave intersection, which we'll show you on one of the maps in the future, that would ensure that the fire truck was able to get immediately onto Main Street and continue around and head back towards Patterson Ave as quickly as possible. So again, we'll get there. But these were all things that were concerns and all things that were addressed by the council and the fire department chief to ensure that the response times were not greatly affected. So first things first, and I'm gonna bring up a PowerPoint to show if everything remains a two-way here. First, let me share my screen. That everybody at home can see. You already shared. All right, so I hope everybody can see this here. This is if Patterson Ave were to remain a two-way road. So what would happen here is, we'll go through some of the benefits if Patterson were to remain a two-way, with the island remaining where it is. There would be no change in the current landscape in the sense that the roadway would remain and the curves essentially would remain where they are. There, of course, would be a familiar traffic pattern for everybody as it presently exists. And there would be some spaces added to what would be the western side of Patterson Ave. I know we're looking at the screen up and down here, but that's the western side of Patterson Ave, where there would be some spaces added. It would be about 20 spaces in total that it would have on the western side of Patterson Ave. Or some final engineering, we need to go into the exact number of spaces. And there's some would be lost, because there is a crosswalk that would be added in here. Again, not as, this is not a final plan, but a crosswalk would be added in the middle of the roadway here. So there would be somewhere between 18 to 20 spaces added on the western side of Patterson Ave. That's what we'd be looking at if this remained a two-way road, and as well, Maple would remain a two-way road under this scenario. So we would gain somewhere to the tune of, again, with the four that are presently there, as well as the two, we would be up somewhere between 10 and 12 total parking spaces on Patterson Ave if this were the case. So we would have a net gain of somewhere between 10 to 12 parking spaces if the current landscape continued and everything remains a two-way road. One of the major issues that we have in talking to the traffic professionals is that the crosswalk, as it presently exists, as you cross Patterson Ave at Main Street, is extremely wide and extremely long. It is a dangerous intersection to cross because of the distance that you need to travel across to get across Patterson Ave. It's about 100 feet wide to get across Patterson Ave there, to cross, again, parallel with Main Street. Because of that, it's fairly unsafe, and they suggest narrowing that intersection there, or that that crosswalk there. But again, that is as it presently exists, and that is what it would ultimately look like in that area. Again, everybody's familiar with that, because that's exactly as it is now. All right, so as we run through the other scenarios, the other options are if Patterson Ave becomes if Patterson Ave were to become a one-way road, and this proposes that Patterson Ave become a one-way road south, meaning from the rec center area heading towards Main Street, this proposes that there would be about somewhere between 40 to 42 total spaces that would be on Patterson Ave. Again, depending on whether or not the crosswalk would remove one or two, or if the fire lane may have to add one, or try to remove one or two, depending on the width of it there. But we would end up netting about 40 to 42 total parking spaces on just Patterson Ave. But this would also, again, you know, give us the ability, as we do now also have, the ability to close down Patterson Ave for events. This would also allow us the ability to develop a pedestrian plaza, because it would be narrower. And as you see in this drawing here, on the left side of this screen, but it would be on the southernmost part of Patterson Ave, there would be a large pedestrian plaza and a much shorter crosswalk, as you see there, to cross Patterson Ave parallel with Main Street. So this would allow for a big outdoor area. Yeah, this is Main Street right here. All right, so if you can see the mouse here, this is Main Street. And this is Patterson Ave. And this is where Maple intersects. So you know, I can bring up another rendering here of the entire intersection. So this is where Maple and Patterson intersect. Main Street is on the bottom here. And this is where Main and Patterson intersect here. So this would allow, then, for a one-way street south towards Main Street, a shorter crosswalk here, and a pedestrian plaza in this area to be added to Patterson Ave. Yeah, so I can, so while we're at it, yeah, I can certainly bring up some. So this lot would be accessed from Maple over here. And again, we can, you know, get all that, but yeah, that would be access from Maple. There's the, there's a lot here, and this parking lot would all be connected from the rear. So. This is, yeah, the east side is over here.
And you said the west side as well?
The west side as well here, correct. This land right here, where you see all this here.
Where people park now, where people just park like
Correct, yeah, that's, correct, yeah, that's, that's private property there that people just are going, correct. No, the, so fall, I'm sorry, the Crane Motor Building here, it's gonna be turned into a, actually, that's right, here, I think, is going to be turned into a restaurant. And the, this is going to be developed, these people will access their garages from the rear, from the Mars Canal parking lot here, from the rear, because it will act, the parking lot will actually be from underneath their units. All right, and then from the front, you know, the access, well, it will be retail underneath on the first floor from the street side, but underneath, subgrade from the street, from the rear side, because of the topography there, they will have access to their cars from underneath. All right. The so I'll jump to the pedestrian plaza. So an example of a pedestrian plaza is something like this. And what can be added? There's also several others here. And this is something like the pedestrian plazas that can be added, where there can be tables and chairs and things like that, where you pick up a taco or other food and, you know, or ice cream, and hang out there, and enjoy that on a nice day, and hang out in those areas. So again, we can come back to those in a few minutes. And we'll come back to this map for now. So if, again, Patterson Ave is a one-way and Maple remains a two-way, the county and traffic experts have indicated that that would require a traffic light at Main and Maple. I, again, in my opinion, and for discussion, I believe that would be a nightmare. I believe that traffic lights, well, my opinion, traffic lights through the municipality are where we see traffic. Main and 23, Main and Union, Main and Stevens are largely where we see our traffic backups on Main Street. I think that Main and Maple would essentially add one more spot for people to have to really see a major traffic issue. And again, I, and the reason that they've indicated a traffic light would be required there is because if Patterson was a one-way south, again, towards, towards Main, they've indicated that every vehicle heading east to the right on Main Street would then be required to make that left turn onto Maple there. And if Maple remained a two-way, and vehicles were heading south on Maple towards Main Street, it would add so many more vehicles making a left onto Maple there that if cars were trying to make that nightmare of a left turn from Maple onto Main Street, because of how wide it is already, it would require that many more people to really be trying to beat the vehicles that are making that left turn, and it would likely increase the number of potential accidents in that intersection. So they were saying that a traffic light would be warranted in that intersection. Again, up for discussion for everybody here, but my personal opinion is, I was not certainly in favor of, of that. But again, for yes, because I agree, but I, my, my position was I was not in favor of Maple remaining a two-way and Patterson Ave being I agree, but I I my my position was I was not in favor of Maple remaining a two-way and Patterson Ave becoming being a one-way. Again, for discussion, but if that is what everybody wants here, it would, my, it would just require a traffic light there. So that's what everybody to be aware of that. If that's what everybody wants, it would require a traffic light at Main and Maple. Um if Patterson is a one-way south and Maple remains a two-way.
Didn't include holiday traffic or anything else. It was like two hours in the morning and afternoon in the middle of the week. So any work we do, I think we're doing to probably address that in some manner.
For those who might hear at home, the comment was that the volume of traffic in that intersection as it presently exists with all the terms. Uh a light might be warranted there now regardless. Um but there is an exception to that that I will review with everybody right now. And again, I will add that my personal opinion, this is my personal favorite, but I am certainly up for it's certainly up for discussion tonight and that's why we are having this meeting. But to your exact point, and I'm glad that you brought that up. My concern is adding a traffic light at Main and Maple is an absolute nightmare. It adds one more choke point in Little Falls where traffic becomes an absolute disaster. But counties indicated, traffic experts have indicated that there may be an exception to all of this that may eliminate that need. And it is the third option that we can discuss right now. And it is that Patterson Ave becomes a one-way south towards Main Street. And Maple becomes a one-way north down Patterson Ave, essentially creating a circle in this area. Here's why a traffic light would be required at Main and Patterson and not Main and Maple. And it doesn't sound like a much better option and I was not keen on this at all initially. Until I spent hours with traffic engineers who have made me realize this may be a better option. And it is because if there's a traffic light at Main and Patterson, it can be timed with the traffic light at Main and Stevens because of how close they are, much like the intersection that most of us will know at Mick Bright Ave and Route Forty-six and the Car Wash and that area there where the two lights are a hundred feet apart. Um but when they turn green, you can go. What, I don't know if all of you have seen the recent post from the mayor in Warden Park. They recently eliminated the no-turn on red side sign, which has dramatically improved that intersection in the past seventy-two hours or five days or so. That was kind of one of the major issues there. So that has been a major improvement there. We would not have that issue with Patterson Ave remaining a right turn, uh you know, at all times there. Uh but because these two lights would be timed together, people that are heading eastbound on Main Street would be allowed to continue through. Um well, let me go through all of here. This would add again the same thirty-eight to forty-two parking spaces on Patterson Ave. Maple Street could theoretically have fourteen parking spaces added to it if it were a one-way. There would be a traffic light at Main and Patterson Ave coordinated with Main Street and Stevens Ave. Uh and the downsides of these would be if they limit the ability to close down Main and Patterson. Unless we were to eliminate the parking on Main and Maple and create it as a detour where there were phones set up allowing two-way traffic on Main and Maple during a a road closure. Uh and it may create the possibility of cut-through traffic on Sindel and Van S was one of my concerns. The traffic experts have indicated to me that they did not believe that to be a legitimate issue. I personally disagreed with that because uh I thought if I was coming home from the rec center and I was trying to get towards uh the Great Knuts section of town, that I might try to avoid this traffic light by going Sindel to Van S and heading that direction. What they've indicated is that if the timing of this traffic light is correct, that because I am now able to avoid the nightmare left-hand turn on Maple to Main. But it would likely be faster for me to actually take the Patterson Ave left-hand turn to head towards the Great Knuts section of town and that it would likely make that direction of travel more enjoyable than making the left-hand turn that I presently have to make from Maple. Again, that's the traffic expert talking, not me personally, but that's what they explained. So that is the three scenario, and and again, we we would have the pedestrian plaza in this area uh if this remained a one-way. So those are the three scenarios that can be discussed this evening and that I wanted to review with everyone. One of the other, I forgot to mention this, benefits that could be added if this setup were the case where uh Patterson Ave was a one-way south and Maple was a one-way north. Is that in the intersection of Main and Maple, there could be a right turn lane added for those heading westbound, which is to the left here on Main Street, a right turn lane and a pass-through lane. There could also be a left turn lane added for those that are heading eastbound to the right here on uh Main Street. As well as a passing lane, which is now one of the major issues that we see when people are sitting with their left-hand blinker on. It oftentimes backs up behind them. One of the other things I forgot to mention earlier, and this is one of the the major issues that I oftentimes see in the middle of town. Is that with Patterson Ave being a two-way, and I had this here and I skipped over it. Is that with Patterson Ave being a two-way, one of the things I oftentimes see is that as somebody approaches Patterson Ave from the the west heading east, so heading right on the screen here. When they try to make a left-hand turn onto Patterson Ave, they have their blinker on and they're sitting there. If that intersection is jammed up, which it oftentimes is, or as traffic is flowing through. There's oftentimes a major backup of traffic all the way through Stevens Ave. Because they sit there waiting to make that left turn onto Main, I'm sorry, onto Patterson Ave. Which causes a delay into the Stevens Ave intersection, causing a delay all the way down Main Street. So. No, because no left-hand turns would be allowed onto Patterson Ave if it wasn't one-way. And you know, let me just clarify the question for people at home because I was asked during the last meeting to repeat questions from people here. So people at home could could hear. And the question was, would that interfere with fire trucks uh coming out? If if that, would that same delay interfere with fire trucks uh coming out of Patterson Ave? The answer to that was no, because uh vehicles would not be permitted to make left-hand turns onto Patterson Ave if it was a one-way.
That is a very wide intersection. I'm concerned personally for my health crossing that intersection. It's wide, there's, you know, young people traverse that area quite a bit, school. Uh I'm I'm not a fanatic about traffic lights, but that is an unsafe scenario because of the speed of the vehicles coming around the bend, not seeing the people in the crosswalk. They'll see the cars, but they don't see the people in the crosswalk because it's much smaller.
The concern was that the intersection of Main and Maple, uh that because of the speed of vehicles in that intersection uh pedestrian and the curve of the road, pedestrians are not as easily visible. Uh and there's safety concerns in that intersection. And I I certainly don't disagree with you there. Uh it is absolutely a concern. Um certainly, I I, yeah, I don't disagree. Um if the concern is pedestrian safety, uh I think that, you know, highly visible crosswalks in that area certainly something that are that are needed. Um again, something that we can certainly look into. I can tell you that since the addition of the safety stick in this area and not to jump off topic too much. Um you know, it's been a number of tickets and violations issued. I can tell you there are a lot less people parking in the no-parking area in that area, you know, behind the the no-parking spots there. Uh it's certainly helping to increase visibility for individuals that are stepping into crosswalks. So that is certainly an improvement there. Uh and it is, you know, I I think something that we can work towards in improving pedestrian safety. I don't disagree though. It is an area that is wide. It's the landscape that we have there. Um you know, it, the why, hopefully, the benefit of how wide that area is is that we may be able to add potential passing lanes for vehicles um as a result of it to allow the free flow of of traffic. So with that said, I'm going to uh I guess open it up for some questions and answers. And then we can turn on one or two of the lights in here. And uh again, uh so again, just to be clear, I know I said this is that I have a personal preference in this. But this is certainly up for discussion. Uh there there is no decision that has been made whatsoever. Uh I I I am just looking to ensure that there's pedestrian safety in downtown. Um but I I if the ultimate decision by the the group here is that there is no change is made, then so be it. You know, we can proceed with that, sure. Sure, how how long are you at?
With the stormwater design, we have a lot of problems in this town with flooding downstream here in Charlotte, Ford floods. Is that going to be addressed properly? I know it wasn't addressed originally in their submission account and I really want to see that addressed properly.
Again, I, you know. Yeah, this meeting is not necessarily about stormwater. Um yeah, any stormwater requirements will be met. I'm sure the, yeah, the engineers will absolutely address that. The, as far as the county waiting for information from the municipality, this has to do with the width of roadways due to whether the directions are one ways, two ways, more traffic lights will be required as a result of the police.
Actually, uh those signals, uh and time signals, I've done that type of work. We're talking about a multi-million dollar study in construction, design, or something like that. You're going to be paid for that. I'm curious what that won't work. Some of the issues with traffic signals then, as the traffic patterns change, they have to go back and find them again with the little cross on. And one of the issues I saw whenever we do the traffic study and the city unit, very, very limited, didn't account for the traffic from Route Forty-six. Forty-six is being widened and there's more traffic than that. There would have to be a very significant traffic study really to determine what will work for all of this. Not that the one ways won't work, maybe something you have to just minimize the traffic currents on these intersections.
So, can I repeat the question briefly? Uh the question was that traffic signals are expensive. Uh the traffic signal at Main and Stevens is being changed and just to jump to that very quickly, well, first of all, first of all. The traffic signals are expensive was part of the question and concern. And who's going to improve and pay for all of that? Who's going to pay for timing changes in the future and perform studies and things of the sort? Uh the good news is that the traffic light at Main and Stevens is already being changed out with brand-new, state-of-the-art electronics uh as part of the Streetscape project. It has already been funded. Problem is, it's not going to be delivered till November and that's why that portion of Streetscape has not been completed, probably won't be for a number of months. The the new black arms and electronics are in back order until November. So once those are in, that will be uh installed. The developer is going to be offsetting costs on the traffic light in the area if it's required uh by the county. So that will be addressed by the developer in the area. So that will be taken care of. As far as the uh future timing, the good news is this. The county's position has been because it is Little Falls traffic, it is Little Falls that gets to update the timing uh of their traffic lights. They haven't required intense traffic studies to update timing. In fact, they've let us done it, do it on sort of a trial and error basis. And if we think adding five seconds to a traffic light would help flow traffic smoother through Main Street. They've let us add five seconds and having companies that we have um call to update the timing is fairly inexpensive to do. Well, green lights and red lights and crossings. That's, that's not really a safety. That would just create traffic. That's not really a safety issue. So I I I guess that would be an issue for the councils to ultimately determine how long the parking should be in the, there would be the question, I'm sorry, this is a difficult concept for me. The question is, will the parking along Patterson Ave uh be two-hour parking, I guess, timing uh associated with it? And I guess that that would ultimately be a question for the council to determine. Um I'm assuming it would have some restriction on time. I know that many of the businesses in town like to have a restriction on the timing, especially along uh on the roadways themselves. I know that in the lots, we've allowed much longer parking, uh but the parking on the roadway is directly in front of businesses. I know the businesses uh like to have some turnover in those particular spots because it helps you their businesses and helps keep them in. So I'm sure there'd be some. I I don't know exactly the timing. Sure.
The feasibility of meter parking, whereas if you have these two facilities on the east and westbound residential. How many times are those face, residents going to be parking on the street, running side, not occupying those those spots on the street without the unlimited amount of time? Because unless you have somebody standing checking, you wouldn't know. So if you had an actual meter parking, hour parking. Uh that would kind of deter uh long-standing parking by on the customers.
Sure. So the question is, but you know, meter parking may assist in determining residents that live there from parking on the streets for extended periods of time. And to answer that question, uh there have been prior discussions and this may actually be a future town hall that I host. I know there have been discussions uh between amongst residents, again largely on Facebook about metered parking in town uh and a very hot topic uh amongst the Facebook groups. Um because, because metered parking has previously been a topic that's been brought up for discussion. Uh and there are a lot of residents strongly opposed to metered parking and others that feel that metered parking might assist. I know businesses feel very different than residents and uh there's certainly, uh you know, benefits to to each. I guess depending on which side of the aisle you sit on uh in that regard. But uh there's definitely a lot of things that can be sort of discussed with respect to metered parking. And there's things that can be addressed with uh residents and whether or not residents pay for the first couple of hours and all sorts of different things that we can have a discussion on in the future. Um no, residents may not pay so long as they don't stay in a spot for more than X number of hours. There's all uh sorts of things that that can certainly be addressed, but I think that is a four-hour town hall for another night. Uh but but definitely something that we can have another town hall about uh another. What other questions can we ask? Go ahead.
So there's gonna be, if no matter what we do here, there's gonna be another light coming.
Not if everything remains, well. Not necessarily. If everything remains a two-way right now, there may not be, but the two-way at Maple and Main Street may very soon require a traffic light in the future regardless. So to answer your question. Yes, maybe. Uh the question was, the question was, no matter what, will there be a traffic light required somewhere in the future? And I should have started with that. Um and and again, I wish I had a more definite answer for you. Um but but the traffic reports and traffic studies have indicated that the current intersection of Main and Maple is dangerous enough that one may be warranted. But they haven't said that one needs to be installed right now. Uh that doesn't mean that three years from now, one will not be necessary, or five years from now. But it may. So in short, if the decision is, you know, everything remains two-way, there may be one there in five years any. So again, I, I wish I could give you a more concrete answer. But I. Yes, far, far more dangerous because of how wide it is. And. No, Maple and Main is much wider. That the Maple and Main Street intersection by Schumacher Chevrolet. Is. Right. Right, yeah. Oh, no, 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 the. In order to make the left from Maple Street onto Main Street. You are oftentimes an entire vehicle length into. The, I guess, westbound lane on, on Main Street. And still oftentimes before you even start making that, that left hand turn. Yep, yeah, absolutely.
Just for clarification, can you show us on the map what construction is going where?
Sure, there's construction in this area. Here. There's sixty units here. And seven thousand square feet of retail and. Restaurants base. And on this side. There is. The six townhomes and. Eight condos. They, they have all their own parking spaces underneath. Well, there's the, so, well, there are, there could be, again, it depends, and this is. Depending on if the roads are one ways, two ways. So there's a lot that goes into all of it. There could be up to about forty-two parking spaces on Patterson Ave where presently six exist. There could be up to. Fourteen parking spaces on Maple Street where none presently exist. There are nine additional spots being added to the Morris Canal Parking Lot. And again, that's not presently filled. There are going to be. Somewhere between eighty and ninety spots at the PNC Parking Lot. Which is now municipally owned in the municipal parking lot. Somewhere between eighty and ninety, it's not fully. Engineered yet. And that's. They're already owned. They could purchase them years ago. Right. Correct. So again, that, that is, I think, a topic for another day in the metered parking conversation. And the question was, is, are the costs of the parking lot's going to be recuperated? That, that's, I think, again, a metered parking conversation and right now the answer is no, you know, no meters are being installed right now. No, so I can tell you this. They. It is much cheaper to, for a municipality to build and install surface parking than it is to install. Multi-level parking. In fact, if you talk to a town like. Montclair or Ridgewood or those towns, they tell you that it's somewhere between forty and sixty thousand dollars per parking space to build multi-level parking. To purchase a parking lot that has. Fifty spots in it or so like PNC. It cost us two hundred and fifty thousand dollars in total to purchase the entire lot. So. Do that math. Then it cost us, you know, several hundred thousand dollars per lot to, to acquire each of those homes. And it's going to cost us about five hundred thousand dollars to make the entire improvement to the park. So in total, per spot to have somewhere between eighty and ninety total parking spots in a brand new municipal parking lot. And we've acquired the entire Morris Canal Parking Lot from the water company at no cost, just, you know, our, our maintenance. We've been doing all right and we've also gotten a pilot, which is a payment in lieu of parking from the developer. The two and a half, and if that's our business administrator, how much the pilot was, you call that the pilot payment? Yeah, five thousand per space and it was a shortage. And it was a shortage of, I forget the exact number, it was several hundred thousand dollars that the municipality is receiving. For shortage of spaces that restaurants and things will rely, that will rely upon public parking. So that's how we are recuperating. You know, things like fees like that for, for public parking. Sure. Well, the question is, will the light, will the light at Maple and Main cause additional congestion in the area? Especially in light of Schumacher Chevrolet being there and Wilmore Road in that area. That is certainly a possibility. Again, I personally think additional traffic lights. Have traffic. Sure. Well, I guess one of the. So the concern is that speeding is one of the concerns that he sees here in town and that he doesn't see the negativity associated with traffic lights. In Little Falls. And again, I can tell you. Concern that I see far more frequently than speeding on Main Street is traffic on Main Street. I certainly hear a lot more about traffic on Main Street than I do speeding on Main Street. In fact, we hear about traffic on Main Street despite the fact that I don't believe. There's tons of daily traffic on, on, on Main Street. In fact, I think it's been a lot better since the timing of the traffic lights has been updated. But I do believe that we see our heaviest traffic around traffic lights on Main Street. And I just think that adding traffic lights does a number of things. It does certainly, but it also causes. So one of the things that is being discussed is addition of crosswalks near. Wilmore Park currently, so that would certainly assist. In, in people crossing the roadway. You're absolutely right that, you know, it is a, an intersection that can be difficult to cross. From time to time. There is no doubt about that. I'm not denying that, but. Sure, you're, you're right. Again, during, during the school, you know, there is crossing guarding that intersection. But still, it's absolutely a concern. I don't disagree. Again, if people are in favor of a traffic light in that intersection, it's certainly something that can be addressed. But I also want everybody to know. Traffic lights come to the tune of six hundred plus thousand dollars and they come with additional maintenance. That is required on an ongoing basis. So just also keep that in mind as well. Again. I, my opinion has always been. And that traffic lights will add traffic to them. And if people are okay with that, I'm not opposed if people want to see an additional traffic light at, again. I'm, I'm not standing here because I came here with, you know, an absolute position that something has to happen here tonight. If the ultimate decision is that everything remains the same, that's okay also. I just told you, I, I told you what my personal thought was, but I'm also okay hearing everybody's opinions and everything remaining the same.
You talked a lot about parking that's being added to public parking in Morris Canal. If the streets become runways in the municipal lot. There's also parking being added for the new residents, correct?
Yeah, that, that was part of.
I don't know that you mentioned that, so I just want the room to understand that there's also.
Every single residential unit. Needs. The, is fully compliant with the residential parking, every single unit. It depends whether it's a townhome, it depends whether it's a apartment. It's based on the parking standards that are set. By the municipality and the, the name of the parking standards, but if, if they are fully compliant based upon the. Yes, absolutely. Townhomes all have two spaces. Townhomes all have two spaces. Wall Street, absolutely. Wall Street garages, they're certainly. I do not. So the question is, do you know the distance between the two lights on Main and Stevens and Main and Patterson? I do not know that distance. It's probably, I'd say definitely less than a quarter mile.
Like you can't look at one town and see if much of it is like, we have a concern on where I'm in. That cars can't see on that curve, like that is just. But with a street skate, I feel like you can add a bike lane, you know, end up, you end up narrowing the more you. Not saying get rid of the four lanes, but I kind of see in the schematic, you have some triangles, some. You know. Brighter lines and arrows to help traffic. I'm hoping that. That area can be grown up and discussed more to make that visibility issue really brought up.
Just for everybody home, the comment is that the. Visibility in the Main and Maple intersection with the striping and the arrows and all that may. Be improved with some of the arrows and. Brightness in the area as well as adding a potential bike lane there. That's a good point. And we need to talk about that. Mentioning the roundabout, yeah, so please.
But what my biggest concern would be is. As if that review is enough. For children and people crossing. You know, they do have techniques for the roundabouts. Are actually flat with the ground so that, you know, people with trailers and stuff can kind of use it as that's when they guess, but. You know, someone wants to pass that street and they're worried that it's.
So the comment was about the roundabout and how they help naturally slow down. Vehicles, but there was concern that eighteen wheelers and larger vehicles. Aren't always able to clear them, but some of them are designed so that they are flat and the rear of the trucks can kind of drive over them and get around them. So again, so yeah, the roundabout is also something that we can certainly discuss for, for a few minutes this evening. Sure, the residential component of all of the development is fully compliant. It's the commercial. And the potential. The retail and potential. Restaurant component. That is not, and that is what they paid the pilot for. So. I don't recall there were calculations that were performed and, and I don't recall the exact number off the top of my head. Sure.
What was your idea?
No, this doesn't close the street at all. This leaves the street open. And it, so. Give you an example. So. Right, just like in all of these examples here, where there's a street, but there's an area off the side. Where there are areas set up like this. With tables and chairs and things like that off to the side, but the street remains completely open. I think this is actually an area in Montclair. Currently that has an area much like that. It just widens the sidewalk. In an area where tables and chairs can be set up. And that is something that Little Falls, I think, has certainly been lacking is outdoor dining areas and things like that. So this is something that would be added outside of where the current, you know, the old diner area, the sushi places now, pizza places now. In that area, it's an area where we have the opportunity that if the roadway is narrow. It would allow for a wide pedestrian area. It would also narrow the crosswalk there. So here is obviously, it's another concern that I have later. Well, this would be a municipal pedestrian plaza. Where anybody can take their, their lunch or any food from anywhere and kind of sit there. I, I don't know if this is somewhere where. You know, agreement or opportunity is for, for places to have specific tables and chairs for their restaurants. In the future or something like that, but this is something that the municipality may be able to, to build so that anybody can use it. Rather than particular restaurants, but it may also allow areas closest to the buildings where establishments can put out their own tables and chairs as well to use for themselves. So the comment is that. Traffic lights. Give towns a little bit of the city feel and they should be considered and installed kind of where necessary. One of the comments was that one of the intersections where one may be necessary is Francisco Ave and Cedar Grove Road. And to that, there, you're absolutely right. I agree with you that traffic lights do sort of give more of a. A city feel. As far as Francisco Ave and Cedar Grove Road. The municipality, two years ago, funded a traffic light for that particular intersection. That is currently in the final designs of engineering and will hopefully be installed there within the next handful of months. But as far as the downtown, again, this is an area where, based upon. Traffic, the volume, things like that, there may be a need in this area. For a, an additional traffic light based upon traffic reports, so. Traffic reports, so.
I think I support it because everyone talking around the traffic light and I didn't want to determine that, but five years from now you could say to do nothing. You have a restaurant with no parking on the street and you'll have a pedestrian area and you'll be the traffic light, then you have nothing and a traffic light. So, so my point is like, is, if the likelihood is high of that traffic light comment. Then I think the answer is pretty clear what you, what you should do.
I wish, the question is, can I talk to you of the likelihood of a traffic light at Main and Maple? If it remains a two-way regardless of what, any decision. And I, I wish I could give you a more specific answer, but I can't, I don't know. Based upon the traffic study that I've reviewed. And again, it may not be as thorough as some here would have liked they've seen. You know, the fact that it was limited and it was during COVID, I think actually only adds to the likelihood. That one is more likely than the report even indicated because of the fact that traffic was down during that time. And what I think that means is that it's probably more likely if, you know, if you're opposed to a traffic light being added. It means the likelihood of one being there is more than, you know, you may like. So I think one may be installed there in the future regardless, is, is, is my guess. But again, I can't speak to that with any real degree, certainly, certainly not a traffic engineer.
And is that, as a follow-up, does that mean that if you have initiated the one-way, which. Patterson one-way and Maple one-way and you add the traffic light Patterson. That that strongly reduces the chance that you'll end up with a light at Maple or you may have two lights?
Now, so if one is added at Main and Patterson, the likelihood of there one being one at Main and Maple. Is greatly reduced or eliminated. Because the reason one would be added there was for people that were making the left out of Maple onto Main Street. And that would be eliminated if Maple was a one-way headed north. Right, they're, they're able to do, the issue was cars turning from Maple onto Main Street. Right, but, but that would be eliminated if Maple was a one-way headed north.
Thanks, Mayor. Thanks for helping inform. I, I want to add a little historical context is I. Ate myself, but back in like the early nineties, Little Falls has a Main Street USA program. That was a program that was funded through the National Historic Trust. And so then he said, you know, his dad was on the board, Jesse Watkins, a lot of people put a lot of time into studying and building and making. Little Falls a vibrant downtown. One of the, one of the benefits was getting grant money from the federal government. One of the grants was to fund a traffic study looking at the area. This was when. Making Patterson Avenue like a church street in Montclair was a picture. It was like, we weren't even, we weren't thinking anything about that. We were. Thinking about doing facade improvement, that's when you saw St. John's Church, got a potter movement. Mr. Tesco was building the Eagle Hotel Building and there was, this was building up. As part of that plan, it looked at recommendation for traffic flow in the area should Patterson Avenue. Get renovated and needing in arts community, historic community, and we're restoring the buildings and it was very much focused on. Pedestrian safety. And I hear a lot of people talking about pedestrian safety and that was first and foremost and why the recommendation. Going back to the nineties was for Patterson Avenue to come a one-way with a traffic signal there because. We have a school, we have a library, we have a post office at the time, there we had a municipal building that's probably renovated and. They're not going to walk down to Maple Street. And we see the customers for that Go to Shag eighty-six in the town. I applaud the town's efforts to build a parking lot on Sanders Street. And we see this, you know, magnificent parking that's going to be built there. And they're going to walk through the area between Jackson Building and the historic Dutch church. They're not going to walk to Stevens. They're not going to walk to Maple. They're going to cross as they do, go to the ice cream shop, go to sushi place. And there's not much there right now. When you're adding, always dreamed about with part of the Main Street USA program, having. Vibrant shops, galleries, restaurants, residential mixed-use office. They're going to cross there and that's why we're looking at experts, and I'm not a traffic consultant, but. Experts that looked at it that were paid for by the federal government through the Main Street USA recommended traffic light and one-way on Patterson Avenue. Now skip forward to when we had a master plan reexamination in our, the mayor says, before you were in office. And I served on the committee when we had the business improvement district. Once again, recommendation, if you can look at it yourself, the page forty-one of the master plan reexamination. A recommendation was made for a one-way street on Patterson Avenue with a signal. And why? Not only for the beautification, not only for, not only for the ability to create an arts area, a pedestrian area. It was for safety to get the kids through the rec center safely. But not going to walk down, it will not, if you put a traffic light at Maple, not going to walk down. And now that we're creating a Kirk Street light area on, and that's really the way I envision it on Patterson Avenue. It, it, it below is that the traffic light go there. And now you avoid, with the one-way on Maple Street, you avoid the conflict of the cars, because it is still wide there and we all see what happened. Maybe I would gladly love to make a left going up the Great Knott at a traffic signal rather than inching all the way up. Where shoe blockers on moving cars and trying to get around it. If that was done, that would complicate the need for that travel. But I just want to give some historical context and then fast forward to another study that is done by H C W M. Township Consultants at the time in two thousand and twenty twenty. And look at the redevelopment plans on the town's website. And again, they recommend one-way on Patterson Avenue with a traffic light. So this is not something, someone's mentioning, was this done willy-nilly? It's hardly done willy-nilly. We're talking about thirty years of different groups. Three different sets of professionals, different politicians, the county, the township, traffic consultants, professional planners and engineers. Who have worked and studied this area with desire to have a state downtown and a vibrant downtown. And the three of them have all concluded and that traffic light and the one-way makes sense.
The question is, is it a good, I put a restaurant next to a firehouse? And I guess to answer that, I mean, I guess a firehouse just needs enough room to pull out of their bay and get on the road and go. And as long as, I can tell you, I think one of the, you know, bigger. Concerns that I really have is the absolute willy-nilly parking that we currently have. In that area now, which doesn't allow our firemen anywhere to park in our downtown as it presently exists. I think having dedicated parking spaces for our firemen there. Immediately adjacent to the parking, that's right, to the firehouse, will be a dramatic benefit. I don't know that a restaurant. Being next to a firehouse is a major concern. As long as the tables and chairs aren't set up in front of the garage bays or, you know, or anything like that. And that the turning radiuses are free and clear. I, I don't know that there's a major concern. I can tell you that, you know, that a lot of discussions with company too. They've certainly brought their concerns to me in the past. I think we've accommodated, you know, a lot of their, their major concerns by providing. You know, parking spaces. Would, like the municipality consider moving the firehouse? That would be probably a several million dollar venture to the municipality. You know, I can tell you, I know they have had their own private discussions about moving the firehouse in the past. I know that they, you know, haven't been successful. I know that there are a lot of members there who have, you know, life membership at that particular building. They have a lot of ties to that particular building. That would be something that, you know, their, their members would have to, you know, do. But it would be a several million dollar price tag to taxpayers of Little Falls if the municipality were to relocate that firehouse. But let's go, should we go to someone else real quick that hasn't asked? No, don't try and go.
I'm just saying the one-way. We are all pedestrians that sometimes in the downtown and have a place to go where there might be a tree and a thing.
If Patterson Avenue comes a one-way towards Main and fire truck has to respond somewhere towards the rec center. They have to make a right out of the firehouse, go to Main, make a left, go to Maple, make a left and then go down.
The question is, would fire truck responding towards the rec center have to make a right out of the firehouse, make a left on the main, and then a left on the Maple? Head down, yes, that's correct.
And it's different. If we do all that construction, if it becomes a one-way and the light and that, how much is it going to cost the town? Any of those scenarios will change, you know?
So the developer would be on the hook for a majority of the modifications that are being made. The pedestrian plaza is something that the municipality would seek a grant to make improvements to. That is. Public improvement in that area, that's area not owned by the developer. That is not an area that is being improved by. Developer in that particular area. So that would probably be part of a streetscape improvement as we've seen in the downtown now. Again, I don't anticipate that any development there is going to be done for like two to three years at this point. So it could be a future, a grant that is sought in the next couple of years. But there would be, and the traffic circle would be something else if that's a direction that we worked ahead. Would be something else that we'd have to discuss. There may be some infrastructure improvement monies that we may be able to seek to make that improvement as well. That's something else. But other than that, all the streetscape that you saw on the map previously in that whole area. Would be largely on the developer that previously agreed to do that, that previously agreed to make improvements to the firehouse and a lot of that surrounding area. Flash, yes, flash. So I'm going to. Let me see if I can share my screen somehow. All right, so bear with me here, everyone, for just one split second. So, so this currently, the circle would allow for. Very short crosswalks along, around these areas where there are presently much longer crosswalks. Here, and it would allow for, right now, there's no really good way to get from. The western side of Patterson Ave, well, there's not even a real sidewalk along the western side of Patterson Ave, which will be created. And it will allow for people to get across the street here and then again, across the street to get over to the rec center. Which is over here on the eastern side of Patterson Ave. So there will be a way in the future for people to safely actually cross. Along here in the future. The other issue, as some of you may have noticed, and what this may help with the circle in this area is. Pulling out of the current Morris Canal lot has a little bit of a difficult line of sight as you look to the left. Down Patterson Ave towards the rec center. It is not the easiest thing to see. And what this would do is sort of realign you coming out sort of to the right to enter the circle. And head down Patterson Ave this way or head down Patterson Ave back towards the rec center if that was the direction. You were looking to go. So it would really make the visibility here much easier. Again, if this were the direction that. Everybody were, were looking to go here. So it would add a bit of, again, a directional line of sight improvement here if that's what people. So yours is a great one. And so you currently, so the question is, sure, so first question is. Maple is a nightmare going towards school two from Dex Park area in the mornings have, usually it's backed up halfway. Around eight-thirty in the morning. And, but you, but you do currently take Maple anyway, right? Or, or do you, or do you cut down, my question, I guess my question in response is, do you cut down Sindel now? Or do you wait in that nightmare of the Maple delay? So you stay in that nightmare of a delay now, right? Now, I have a question. If that delay were, again, I don't know if this is going to be the case, but hypothetically. If that delay were cut down and you didn't have to try to punch it to beat people on the Main and Maple intersection. And you knew you were going to have to wait one light and you're going to make it easy to make a left onto Main Street at Main and Patterson. Would you go that way if it were less timed than Main and Maple is now? Say, yeah. And I don't know the, I don't know the answer, but I guess to those that currently wait in the nightmare of Maple Street. And making that left now, I guess if, to the, again, this was my fight and debate with the traffic engineers themselves. I said, why would people not take Sindel to Van Asser cut-throughs like you've indicated? And their response was because it will take less time to go down Patterson Ave and make the left with a traffic light. Where they don't have to worry about getting T-bones. So to your point, they've indicated it'll be faster to go down Patterson Ave. And make the left than you're presently waiting at, on, you know, on Maple Street now. So. So it's all in the rear. There's going to be one access point from right here for them. And the other is the current one on Maple Street. That's not on this shot, this, this video right here, but that current access. That exists on Maple right now, it'll be the same one there, parking lots will be connected.
I am not native to New Jersey.
Drive me bombers. So I'm not convinced, even though I love a roundabout, that people around here are going to be able to figure it out. That's. But my other, my other comment is as a, as a passenger. Of the town, I really. Not appreciate having dirt parking for the downtown area, I know it's a problem. But I pay nothing taxes if it's going to be a public green space. Then it should be accessible to the public. And if businesses are going to benefit from having a public green space in front of their businesses. But I don't. Agree with the possibility that they would be able to have dedicated. Areas in our public room for their own.
So the comment was for nobody to. Hold on for a comment for those at home was to have easily visible street signs for, for Morris. For those at home, the comment was really about the main and Union intersection and the timing of the left turn lane. And just so you're aware, the, you no longer use the scales in the road to deal with the left turns, the cameras that are on the poles that. Turn whether the left green arrow goes on, so. All right, so I guess I'll take one last question and then I'll kind of just take a. A poll here to figure out what direction we go moving forward here, so. Last question here tonight and we'll, we'll open it up. Their primary recommendation was, so the traffic expert's primary recommendation was that both streets are a one-way. It would, would allow for the best traffic flow through the middle of town. If we're hoping to have the best flow through there. Again, with traffic being one of the biggest primary concerns that I hear about on a daily basis. With people saying a rush hour, it's difficult getting home, it's difficult getting through the middle of town. And to just circle back to one of the big concerns, we have a lot of cut through traffic and people speeding on Maple. The reason, I'm sorry, on Walnut, the reason that we have that is because Main Street is backed up. Having flow down Main Street in town is one of the biggest primary things that I think we need to have. Again, not people speeding down Main Street, but having traffic flow down Main Street smoothly is one of my biggest concerns. That's why I, for the past handful of years, have been working with the engineers to, you know, change and modify the timing. Of the, the red and green light cycles here. Yeah, a- and it's definitely one of the things that I've been working towards to, to make sure that we all have. As, as a smoother ride every single day. So that said, again, happy to hear everybody's ideas and thoughts about. What direction we should ultimately head here in town with respect to one ways and two ways. And again, I'll open it up for a kind of a, a quick round table and, and see what everybody's chief. Great question. So the chief's question is, in the pedestrian plaza, is there going to be any way to. Try that there's not a million people, you know, running into the streets. Yeah, this is an area where there would be, it would be more of a decorative way to do it. But it would be with planters and biology decorative features are really the new way to ensure that people. It's just not a wide open way and a curb that people step off into and, and run into streets, but they do it with decorative features now. And ensure that people are not just, you know, running across streets left and right, so absolutely. But, but yes, they would be sort of contained in that area. Also there for the safety of the pedestrians to ensure that vehicles don't just mount the curbs and drive into, you know, pedestrians that are, you know, gathering in an area as well. Sure, so great, so I'll address those couple of concerns to you. So one of the things you mentioned is. Is will there be, you know, i- is, is the lights, so the first is this. First, one of the things a developer would be required to do, so this was addressed at the planning board meeting, that. If, because again, this has been discussed for over a decade now in town, potential of a one-way here. And part of what we required when these things were done before, this even appeared before. The Little Falls Planning Board was that in the event the road were to be changed to a one-way. One of the requirements was that two beacons be placed here stopping traffic. On Patterson Ave to ensure that this entire portion of the roadway remain free of vehicles. Sure that when the fire truck does pull out, there are no vehicles queued up in this intersection here. Make sure that the, the, the fire truck can pull out and make the left turn. So with that, this portion of the roadway will be free of vehicles and the fire truck will be able to make the left turn. Head towards Maple and head back down towards Patterson Ave. So that's the first goal. But to address the second part of your concern. If it's that. Firemen will have a delay in response time. I believe it would make most sense then that firemen respond to a firehouse closest to their home. In town rather than responding to a firehouse on the opposite side of town. Which would allow them to get the trucks much faster and would allow them to respond to fires much faster. But of course, that's not something that we require in town. We allow firemen in town to pick the firehouse that they respond to based upon their preference and whichever house they have ties to. And I say that only to say that. If a fireman from Great Notch is allowed to run all the way to Singac and get on that truck to then go all the way to a fire. Or a fireman in Singac is allowed to run over to Great Notch to go all the way back to Singac to get to a fire. If we're really, we're most concerned about response times in the municipality. It would make the most sense to require firemen to respond to the house that they were closest to in order to maximize response time. So again, I am not knocking responsibly, this response time is absolutely critical in this town. And ensuring that a fire truck can get out of this area is absolutely something that was considered. And it was addressed because these beacons are absolutely important, because if cars were queued here. And this was a red light and flow of traffic was moving on Main Street. There's no way four, five or six cars would be able to get out of the way. Because those cars on Main Street are not stopping because three, four or five cars are trying to get onto Main Street because there's a fire truck behind them. So I absolutely agree with you that it would be an issue. But again, this fire truck getting out and again. The ability for the firemen just to be able to park around this firehouse in the future. Will do more than save the 30 seconds of difference that you guys have, that you guys may experience in a delayed response. Because you know probably better than anyone in that firehouse. That parking in that area for the firemen has always been a major, major issue. And being able to park right at the front door, walk in, get dressed, get in the truck and go will. Certainly improve response times dramatically. At, at, at company two, because that has always been, again, a problem for, for your members there. Who have spent minutes sometimes driving around in circles, looking for parking spots in that area. So I, I, I think that that will certainly, again, help all of the firemen. And in getting to any of the calls that there are in that area of town. And again, will certainly not harm anybody in that area.
I haven't driven around and done a count of the houses, but I'm sure there's over 100 residences. Main Street and Route 46 and any delay, as your own fire chief brought up here. Prior to my standing up, that there will be a delay. I happen to have a house fire. I think it was two years ago, I had a timer outside. You saw the smoke from the timer, it caught the siding on fire. I had all the companies at my house. Unfortunately, I was 150 miles away in Groton, Connecticut, I had a dinner with my daughter. Okay, but my point is, I don't want to see any delay. Regarding fire trucks heading to the north part of this section, Jackson Park, Gerald Court, Sindel Ave, the bottom end of Van Ness. It's, I just turned it up, the rec center, yeah. I mean. It's, as, as you indicated, there's a, a growth, an almost growth. First, as time goes on, fire expands. But anyway, again, that's my purpose from here, I hope you understand it. And, and you're, you're taking, I, I, I understand parking spaces. I don't think it's going to leave, unless you reserve fire parking spaces, they're not going to be over. Do we have them now?
No.
Why not?
There never happened there, there are no parking spaces near the firehouse. Because, because it's a two-way street and because there's no parking roads now, why, again, there, there, there just are no parking spaces. So, so the point is we're going to be creating something new there for the firemen in this area. But you're also assuming that, so because we are a volunteer fire department. You're, it does, I'm gonna tell you why, you are, no, you're assuming that the first company that's responding. Is company two. Right, but what if company two is not even staffed during the fire at your house? And you may have ultimately had that, but there are four fire companies in town. And, and they may very well have, but the point of this is. That, that company four, company three, company one, all of these other companies. May have also responded, they may have responded first, company two may have responded to your home, I don't know. But the point is that the 30 seconds here that we are talking about. There may have been others that responded first. And I don't know either, and again, I'm not minimizing the fact that there may very well be a reduction. That's why we ran tests and that's why I, I addressed it early on in this meeting. Four. And that's why, that's why.
Your test, your timing test is like going.
They were done last year. I'm gonna have, again, just, just, I'm gonna go around real quick and take a quick. Oh, to see where everybody feels we should head here, so that I can continue discussions with county moving forward. Give them an idea. So the first is, I guess. So the, the first question that I have is, I guess. Is of the belief that the roadways should remain as they presently exist. With everything remaining a two-way, keeping in mind that there may be potential in the future for. For a potential light at Main and Maple. Those people, who is of the mindset that Patterson Ave should become a one-way, but Maple should become a two-way for the light being installed at Maple Ave? Now, this is, this is, this is Maple as a two-way, Patterson Ave as a one-way. All right, and who is of the mindset that both are one-ways, Patterson Ave South, Maple Ave North, both roadways one-ways? All right, that is a bit more than the first one. So this was a bit of a split decision with that one having more of the votes, so. All right, so I will continue discussions with the counties, I will ensure that that seems to be the. Again, that what we discussed here this evening is the direction that the county would approve. But again, happy to have additional discussions with. There's certainly more answers, there was 12 the first time, there's more than 12. There was more, 12 the first time. And it was about 18 or 20 the second time, it was a long way to fly. So, so again, so I, I will, and continue discussion with county with both of you. Yeah, I, I, I really do appreciate everybody coming out tonight. I do plan on hosting a few more town halls going forward. What about parking meters for everyone that has interest in, in discussing the. Again, not necessarily adding parking meters, but the benefits of. And just to give everybody a 10-second overview, the benefits of the potential of actual parking meters, which I am not necessarily in favor of. The potential of digital parking meters, which are. They're, they're, they can be done by license plate readers and things like that. Where there's potential where residents may not have to pay, but may be limited to a certain number of hour parking. Where non-residents may have to pay at kiosks and things like that. So there's a lot of potential options with respect to quote unquote metered parking that we can explore further. So these are all things, and I know the business administrators are shaking as I talk about these things, because there's a lot of things that go into that. But certainly all things that we can talk about. And as we, as I, you know. On those from the companies, I'll send that information and email blast the dates and time for those. But everybody enjoy the next couple of weeks of summer as the weather warms up. Thank you everyone for coming out tonight.